Welcome to the Town Board meeting. The first item on the agenda is the appointment of the Township Deputy Clerk. Would someone like to make a motion?
I move to appoint Elaine Deputy Clerk of the Township.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to appoint Elaine Artwell, the Deputy Clerk of the Township. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, congratulations Elaine.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Would you like to call us to order?
Trustee Braithwaite, trustee Nguyen, trustee Wilson, trustee Holmes, trustee Tendem, trustee Grover, trustee Rainey, trustee Burris, trustee Fisk. We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the September 23, 2013, meeting of the Town Board. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the 2012 Annual Town Meeting. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next is the Evanston Township Audit Report. Do we have auditors here to walk us through this, Mr. Lyons?
No, we do not.
We do not. Does anyone have questions about the audit report?
Is anybody going to give us a report on the audit report?
Thank you, Ms. Esther. Very good. I appreciate it.
Is there a financial person from the township here by chance?
Yes.
Good.
Good evening.
Good evening. Alderman Braithwaite?
This is our last human service meeting. Thank you, Madam Mayor. There was a conversation of who was actually going to pay for the audit report. Did we ever settle that conversation?
That was for the NOVAC audit.
Oh, that's the NOVAC. Okay, wrong one. Pardon me. Okay.
It was a program audit, right?
Right, right. Pardon me.
Alderman Braithwaite? Your light's still on.
Oh.
Are there any other questions? Did you want someone to walk us through it, Alderman Rainey?
Right. Just give us some comments on the report and recommendations, et cetera.
You were sending a communication, I believe it was a month ago. But the suggestions that we're giving, if you turn to, do you have your communication?
I don't have it.
You don't?
It's in the packet.
In the packet.
From this meeting or last?
No.
The audit report is in the packet.
I'm looking for it.
I bet you that I gave you a little while ago and it's got the link.
Oh, Alderman Rainey, the link is on the bottom of this page. You can read it. What page are you looking at, Ms. Artwell?
I am looking at page two. There were four points made in the audit. And basically, they're made every year due to the small staff that we have. Other than that, our audit was very good.
Yes, it's just that you don't have two people to check on one another's work.
Correct.
Because you don't have enough people.
Because we're so small.
That's pretty important.
Are there any other?
You know what? I completely give up. Forget I ever asked anything. I think it's pretty outrageous for a trustee to ask for a presentation on the audit. So I take it all back and I apologize.
Thank you very much.
Just a reminder that we will be placing, hopefully with council approval or trustee's approval, on the ballot a referendum having to do with abolishing the township. Just remember.
Thank you. Acting City Manager Lyons, did you want us to accept the report or?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Just as the city does, and I apologize for my voice. It's a leftover from the weekend, I believe. It would be to accept the audit and place it on file.
Would someone like to make a motion to do that?
Move to accept the audit and place it on file.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to accept the audit and place it on file. I guess we can do that with a voice vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The audit is accepted. Before we get to Ordinance 1 TO 13, I notice the agenda does not have time for citizen comment. And I think since it's a township meeting especially, but always in Evanston, we have citizen comment. And people have signed up to speak on the township, so I'm going to call on them now. Priscilla Giles, Angela Butler, Andrew Ward, and Betty Esther. If you'd state your name and address, and you each have three minutes.
My name is Priscilla Giles, and I live at 1829 Ashland in Evanston. I'd like for the wording on the referendum to be such that everyone can read and understand it, so that the same thing that happened last time would not happen again, that people did not know how they were voting, they did not know how important it was that they understand what they were voting for. And I think the wording was such that it confused people, and they did not understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, point of information. There are very strict guidelines, and I think our council will tell us regarding how wording can be placed on a referendum. So we don't always, you know, we'd like to go into a lot of detail and blah, 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 but you have to abide by certain criterion restrictions.
Thank you.
You're either for it or against it?
Angela?
My name is Angela Butler. I am actually speaking on behalf of Bonnie Wilson tonight, the Township Assessor. She sends her regrets that she could not be here this evening, but she did get sick. She wanted to initially state that "The town of the city of Evanston was saddened to hear the passing of Sharon Eckersaw. We hope that the family will find courage and strength to bear this loss. We would like to send our deepest sympathy and condolences to the Eckersaw family." This is from the Township Office of Assessor, I'm sorry, Township Office of Supervisor Gasparde and Bonnie Wilson and the staff of the Evanston Township. She would also like to add that she was looking forward to working with Sharon on the 2014 budget. Funeral arrangements have been made for Sharon. There will be a wake at St. Mark's Church on Wednesday, evening from 6:30 to 9:00. And the funeral will be Thursday, the 26th, at 11 o'clock, also at St. Mark's Church. So since our last meeting, the Assessor's Office processed 2013 assessment appeals on 428 residents for Evanston taxpayers to the Cook County Board of Review. 2013 appeals are now closed for the Evanston Township residents. Results from these appeals are expected in October. Taxpayers who live in the Evanston zip code 60203 actually reside in the Niles Township and can file an appeal now to the Cook County Assessor for their 2013 reassessment. Niles appeals will be accepted through October 7, 2013. Bonnie would like to remind everyone that the 2013 assessment that is lower than your 2012 assessment does not necessarily guarantee that a lower dollar amount of taxes will be due in 2014. She would also like it to be noted that in August, the office helped 19 taxpayers receive corrections to their property tax bills totaling $31,604.60. This brings the total dollar amount returned to taxpayers for the first five months of the fiscal year to $160,344.54. And corrections can still be made going back to 2009 for tax exemptions. If you think you missed an exemption or have never had or never applied for your exemption, please contact the Assessor's Office to see what exemptions were applied to your property taxes and what exemptions may have been missed. Last week, the Assessor's Office moved from 846 Dodge to the Evanston Civic Center. We're located in room 1450. Our new phone number is 847-448-8168. And we intend to be fully operational by September 25. Lastly, Bonnie understands that you guys are planning to vote tonight on the binding referendum question to discontinue and abolish Evanston Township. And she wants to make it perfectly clear that she does not approve of the referendum, that she has worked very hard these past four years to be an advocate for the taxpayers of Evanston. And she feels very strongly that the general assistants and the Assessor's Offices are providing excellent programs and services to the residents of Evanston. And she wants it to be noted that she is not supporting the abolishment of the Evanston Township. Lastly, she would like to thank everyone at the city who helped us move and made the transition go well. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to City Hall. Andrew?
Hi, I'm Andy Wade, not Ward, but I live in the 6th Ward, but I'm actually also here on behalf of Metropolitan Family Services. And I think that I might have gotten the clarification that some of the other mental health providers were interested in. There was an email going around today with some concerns about, in the township budget under community-purchased services, it looks like for FY '13, it's zeroed out. Apparently, that has to do with the nine-month fiscal year. I will ask the Health Department to clarify that. But what we just want to confirm is, it looks like the agencies have been paid for up to the January 1, when the new fiscal year starts. And it looks like, I guess the question that we're asking is, will it be that in fiscal year '14, the Mental Health Board budget, will that also be split between the township budget and the city budget? Or do we know the answer to that yet? We just need to know where to advocate for mental health services.
Mr. Lyons, do you have an answer? Mr. Swankowski, otherwise known as Matt.
Madam Mayor, Town Board of Trustees, Matt Swankowski, Assistant to the City Manager. The fiscal year '14 budget for the township is not yet set. It will be coming before you in the, at the same juncture as the city budget, as well as the library budget. And so you will see the allocations for the programs outlined in the next couple of weeks. It's still in draft form, being proposed by the township.
My name is Betty Esther. I stay at 2031 Church Street. You'll be voting to on placing a referendum on the ballot in March. And once that referendum, which is certified, which will be in late December, and like with any election, and like with the one before where the city went out and talking to the residents and everything, I would like to have the opportunity, and I'm asking for it, that whoever is going to be speaking for the trustees, that this, that the residents of the city of Evanston should vote to dissolve the township. I would like to have the opportunity to debate them at meetings, so that, to tell the people why they shouldn't be voting for this. So if we could have public debate on this, I would love to have it. Thank you. And if not, give me a good reason why we can't.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey.
Madam Mayor, could we have our council explain the role the council or Board of Trustees can play in a campaign having to do with a referendum we place on the ballot?
Madam Mayor, members of the board grant for our Town Board attorney. With respect to the election code and the laws of the state of Illinois, it's quite clear that a governmental body and its staff cannot have any role that would be described as quote-unquote "electioneering," that is advocating on one side or the other with respect to a public policy question. The proposed question would be submitted, but the issue of debates and things of that nature, that would most likely fall afoul of the election code and would be disallowed.
Thank you. Ms. Esther, did you?
Yes, I did hear that, and I'd like to make a clarification. When the last referendum went, when the last referendum came before us, that referendum was talked about at public meetings. City manager mentioned it and talked about it and stuff. And we debated it, and people listened and stuff. So, while you have someone in the public that probably will be standing up and saying, "We don't want it," there will be people that have it, but you did it in the past. So if you're not going to do it now, that's fine. But I will be out campaigning to say why you should not do it, and I will be campaigning hard. So then, the people will hear my voice, which is fine. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
To Mrs. Esther's point, we will be doing informational meetings at the direction of council, if that, or at the direction of the board, just as you would for any referendum. But again, that's informational on what is to be talked about, not a position.
But we won't be debating, debating or having workshops or anything like that. But the League of Women Voters usually takes a very strong role in issues involving debates. So talk to Betty, Sue.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda that concludes public comments is Ordinance ITO 13, Evanston Township Budget. It's the second reading, and it's for action.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the budget, seeing no lights on for further discussion. City Clerk, would you, or Deputy Clerk, would you call the roll?
Trustee Braithwaite?
Aye.
Trustee Nguyen?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Holmes?
Aye.
Trustee Tendem?
Aye.
Trustee Grover?
Aye.
Trustee Rainey?
No.
Trustee Burris?
No.
Trustee Fisk?
Aye.
Seven, four, and two against.
The motion passes. Next is Ordinance 3 TO 13, to change the township's fiscal year. It's for introduction.
Move approval.
Second.
Can we explain to maybe the audience in terms of that change?
City Clerk, would you, or not City, City Manager, would you please explain for the audience what this is?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Just as the city of Evanston did two years ago, we are looking to bring the township into the same alignment as the city, making it a calendar year, township fiscal year. This will ease in reporting and scheduling for the city slash town board. And most importantly, it will align the annual levy process with the budget, which right now, the levy would be adopted, and then, I'm sorry, the budget would be adopted, and then many months later, a levy is adopted. And now, if we go to the schedule, levies and budgets are either adopted on the same night or the following meeting night. So it provides for much more transparency on levy and budget.
Thank you. All right, it's been moved and seconded to introduce Ordinance 3 TO 13, to change the township's fiscal year. Could we have a roll call, please?
Trustee Braithwaite?
Aye.
Trustee Nguyen?
Aye.
Trustee Wilson?
Aye.
Trustee Holmes?
Aye.
Trustee Tendem?
Aye.
Trustee Grover?
Aye.
Trustee Rainey?
Aye.
Trustee Burris?
Trustee Fisk?
Aye.
Nine, zero.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes. Is there any other business? All right, could we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the Town Board meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The meeting is adjourned. Welcome to the City Council meeting. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye. Or here.
Alderman Nguyen? Alderman Wilson? Alderman Holmes?
Here.
Alderman Tendem?
Here.
Alderman Grover?
Here.
Alderman Rainey?
Here.
Alderman Burris?
Alderman Fisk?
We have a quorum, nine, zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, September 23, 2013, meeting of the Evanston City Council. First item on the agenda, which I seem not to have, is the mayor's public announcements and proclamations. Thank you. This is Fire Prevention Week, October 6. There will be Fire Prevention Week, October 6 through 12. And I also would like to extend my condolences to the Eckersaw family. Sharon Eckersaw believed deeply in public service and acted on her beliefs, and was a passionate advocate for her causes, and we, she will be missed. City Manager, do you have announcements?
Madam Mayor, do you have the award?
Do you want me to announce it?
Yes.
All right, I will. I'm delighted to announce that we have won the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Award for Fiscal Year 2013. And I believe we actually have someone here to present it to us.
Madam Mayor, Alderman, on behalf of the Government Finance Officers Association of the US and Canada, I want to congratulate the city of Evanston for receiving the distinguished budget award. I've been a member of that board for years and a budget reviewer for 25 years. To achieve this award, the city's budgets got to be reviewed by practitioners across the nation, and be up to the high standards that are required for that award. Just to give you an idea, there are four major analytical areas that have to be achieved with criteria under each of those. The budget has to be sufficient as a policy document, as an operations guide, as a financial plan, and also as a communications document. This award is indeed hard to get. Just to give, just a quick couple of statistics, there are only 110 governments in the state of Illinois who get this award, and, which is, by the way, there are 6,994 governments. So that's 1.5 percent. And if we narrow that down to municipalities, which there's 1,299 municipalities in the state, only 72 get that, so it's 5.5 percent. I think many times, we take for granted the quality and level of government that I think pervades the city of Evanston. And this is clearly a demonstration of that. The, again, a high level of professionalism, that we're to congratulate the City Manager, Wally Bobowitz. Also Assistant City Manager, my longtime colleague, Marty Lyons, who's bestowed the award for us over at the high school several times, and I appreciate that. And then the budget team that put this together, Hitesh Desai, Lou Gergatz, Brandon Dieter, and Ashley Porta. Finally, Mayor Tisdale and Alderman, I think you can take solace in the fact that this award is not just for the sake of an award, but it provides two things, I think, that the citizens demand. First, it provides transparency. It provides detailed information on all the goals, the objectives, the budgets, details of all the workings of the government. And many governments don't want to have all those details out there, and this is a credit that the city does. But the second thing, I think, and the thing that's most important, and we're all judged on, is accountability. There's three years of actuals in these budgets. There are fund balances and how they change in those budgets. There's the story, for example, in this town, of the wonderful district, TIF districts, and what they've done to benefit other governments. So that's all part of the budget, and you're to be really proud of that. And I've got the award here, and by the way, this is the first year, this is the new sustainability, so this is, this is the last one you'll get for the next 20 years, because they put the, every year when you get a new one, they put it on, instead of having, cutting more metal. I can't say we're cutting less trees, but cutting more metal. And so this is the new form that the GFOA has for its sustainability, and I'm proud to give it to my fellow colleague, Marty Lyons.
And everyone else. Would you stand up, please? There you go. So City Manager, do you have any other public announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor. On the subject, that was for the 2013 budget, and I would just like to remind everyone of our 2014 budget schedule. We are, as of Wednesday, September 18, we had our budget input session. Unfortunately, we did not have very much attendance at the budget input session. But we did have another means of reaching out, and that was going to seven different locations throughout the community. All members of the budget team held coffees with residents throughout the community, from Central to Howard, and I said Howard, I want to make sure, yes, 1117 Howard. So, and from east to west as well. So the locations, I know in my meetings with folks at Perla Cafe, we had a lot of discussion over facilities. So people have been paying attention to the council's recent discussions on strategic planning, and facilities was high on everyone's list, to talk about what the city would do with all of our facilities. And just a brief reminder that the budget will come to the council on Friday, October 11. On October 26, we'll have a Capitol tour that will be an official council meeting, so that will be open to the public, starting at 9:00 AM at the Civic Center. And then on November 11, we will have the public hearing, which is for the budget and also for the truth in taxation. As I noted before, we do the budget and the levy at the same time. So I invite everyone to attend. We will have multiple council meetings, and the schedule is posted on the city's website. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk, do you have any communications?
None tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is citizen comment. And the first two speakers are Priscilla Giles and Betty Esther.
My name is Priscilla Giles, and I want to comment on the relocation of the Emerson, on the park on Emerson at the foot of Ashland. The relocation, and also the reduction of the size, that also reduces the green space in that neighborhood. And that is on the non-agenda, but it's, I think it's very important to the 5th Ward that we see green and more, and less concrete and glass. Brick.
Thank you. Ms. Esther, did you have more?
You have the item that you're not, I understand, would not be voting on, but I do want to speak to it, and that is the safe school zone. At the, I attended the school liaison meeting, and what came out of that was that the chief editing, our police chief, is supposed to do a month's survey to determine the number of incidents and things that will, that occur within that month. So to give that information to that committee, so they can determine what to do. I was surprised that neither the school, nor the committee, got that info. I was surprised that neither the school nor the committee got that information from the city or from the high school. I did obtain it, I did share it with the, all of the Aldermans and the mayor, and in a fine, from 2009 to 2013, the high schools in the foyer that they sent me, that there was 50 incidents. Thirty-two of them was on the front campus. On the blocks where they are talking about to extend the safe zone, there was only 13. One that happened at Laken Gray in 2011, where the Booker, Mr. Charlie Booker, called the police zone. They had six that happened at Church and Dodge, which the business there called, talked to the police, some of them, they called the police. They had the one on 1600 Dodge, I don't know what happened there, and they had one at Davis Street. Most of these dealt with gangs and fight. The city sent me a proposal where they gave the entire campus, that meant the whole 1,000 feet from the school to 1,000 feet out, for the 2nd Ward and the 5th Ward. And they came up with, they looked at the assault, burglary, and robbery, and that number was high. In 2009 to 2010, it was 600 and something, but it encompassed from 7:00 in the morning to 10:00 at night. And we was only talking about the school timeframe, which is from 7:00 to 4:00. I asked them to, and I clarified to them what I want, because I thought it was clear, and they came back to say, in that timeframe, that five-year timeframe, they only had 41 incidents. She did not give me what street each of the incidents happened, she will give me that tomorrow, and I will file that to you. You need to look at that information and drop the thing of trying to push the zone.
Thank you, Ms. Esther, I do need you to wrap up.
Thank you. The zone is fine, things are working, our police force is doing a good job, they not on campus, but the area around it, the police is patrolling. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, on non-agenda topics, Junaid Rizki, Juan Taylor, Priscilla Giles, and Herb Harms. You already, okay. Thank you, Ms. Giles.
I was not available to attend the meetings on the Harley-Clark mansion. It is very clear to me, this council needs to stop playing politics and deal with reality. There are really three options that are really realistic for Harley-Clark. The first option is, this council needs to tell the Art Center they have to pay a real market rate rent for the facility. That would be close to $200,000. That would cover the cost of capital improvements and maintenance in the range of $2 to $3 million, since the council can borrow that kind of money, as the council borrows money for all its projects. Item two, if the Art Center cannot, does not want to agree to pay a market rent, the Art Center can agree to pay $170,000 to fix the building, to bring it up to life safety requirements, as it needs now to stay in the building. That would only allow them to stay there a short time, city could let them pay a dollar rent, but they'd still have to pay the $170,000. Allow them to stay a few years, but phase them out as a client, as the user of the building, and the city would take the building over for other uses. And finally, if the Art Center does not agree to these things, the council may have to face another decision, and that is, the building will be shut down because it is unsafe, the Art Center would be evicted, thrown out of the building, and this should happen immediately, not just drag along like the city council likes to do, because in a sense, you violate the laws here when you're not doing things. Basically, you say that our life safety things and all these requirements mean nothing, so if you don't shut them down, and they don't want to agree to fix it, that's something you'll need to deal with. The truth is not the story some here have been spreading. The city and the Art Center executed a contract that neither party wanted to follow or honor, and that really is deception. While some here think this is business as usual, it amounts to really a misuse of our tax dollars. It appears council members set up a deal recently to exchange some land, more city parkland at Gilbert Park in the Black community, for a lesser piece of property and spent $250,000 of taxpayer money to renovate the park. More waste and mismanagement. Other rumors now are circulating through this community, possibly that other deals are afoot, being discussed in private again. This is of concern to many. Employees and public officials who now want to continue this, maybe will end up facing more responsibility than just wasting taxpayer money. Far too many citizens are now aware of this deception that is going on here with our city parks. Thank you.
I'm Joan Taylor, and I currently live at 1860 Sherman Avenue. I'm a social worker, and I currently am a member of the Evanston Mental Health Board. I'm here in support of the fine agencies that are supported with township and city funds. I'm here to request your approval of full funding of the Mental Health Board 2014 request, and for your information, that's $767,740. I'm sure you're aware of the wonderful services that are provided by our 15 funded agencies. I just do want to remind you that most of the agencies have received reduction in state funding and also delayed payments, so the local funding is very crucial to continuing the services to our residents. Thank you.
My name is Herb Harms, and I live in the 6th Ward. My interest is the, what happens with the Harley-Clark mansion. I'm in favor of it having it demolished. We know that it's in bad condition, but I just took a walk around. I had been in the construction business at a time in my life, and so I know a little bit about it, and I took a walk around, just to take a quick look, and I'll tell you what I saw, just a quick look. On the, each side of the building, on the, there's a, well, let's see, there's a, let me take a look here now. There's a railing up on the second floor, there's a balcony, a deck up there, and there's a heavy, very heavy railing up there, and it's very poorly supported. I mean, it's just, it's like ready to fall, and there's a lot of people that walk by there all the time, and I think it's very dangerous. And then in the front, on the west side of the building, the main entrance, there's a, there's a crack in the masonry, a big crack in the masonry, about 12 feet long. I think it's very dangerous. And then the fire escape on the south side of the building, there's a very large fire escape assembly, and it's all completely rusted. So I don't know how strong that is, it looks very weak. But anyway, it's not just interior stuff, there's exterior stuff, it's in terrible condition. But the main thing is, though, I'm interested in having more open park space, you know, for more people. I mean, it's pretty limited right now with the art people and people like that. I would rather, I would rather have the mansion taken down and have that nice green space. I mean, it's not a very big park to start with. So we have, we have more green space, and we have a lot more children and people and children in picnic areas. We only have one picnic area there now. We could have more picnic areas, we could have like an overlooked balcony, like some, it is up on a little bit of an elevation there, so it's a very good view of the lake. So, you know, that additional park place would be nice. Instead of having a few hundred people enjoy the old building there, we could have thousands of people in the park and picnicking and having a lot of fun there. And it may be a good idea, too, to have maybe a smaller, a little addition to the parking, maybe another 30 or 40 cars would help a little bit, but we could have that, too, if we wanted to. But the main thing is having, you know, more room. And I'm concerned that maybe some people, they may have, I hate to say this, but some people just may have an idea to keep, spend the money no matter what it takes, millions of dollars to try to fix that junky place. Maybe they have an idea to keep maybe a status quo. Maybe keep the mansion there, it limits the parkland, it limits the amount of people that are going to be there, and maybe that's what some people want. But I want more open parkland and, you know, for more Evanston people to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Barbara James.
Good evening, my name is Barbara James, I live at 802 Colfax Street. I'm here to give you a brief report and update on the No Park Sales First Community Meeting, which was held last Wednesday. We had nearly 90 people turn out, we were very pleased with that, and I would like to thank Alderman Grover and Alderman Fisk for attending. We had several very, very informative speakers and opened up the discussion for potential future uses of the mansion, for the Harley-Clark mansion. We came to no resolution at that meeting, and because we ended up, we didn't have a lot of time, and I would like to invite all of you to our second community meeting, which will be held October 23rd at 7:00 p.m. in Room 2404 in this building. So we're asking the community to come out, to be thinking in the meantime, what they would like to see transpire at Harley-Clark, and to come with their ideas so that we can put those all together and come up with a reasonable proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes citizen comment. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please?
Yes, ma'am. I'd just like to mention to Barbara that that is the night that Economic Development meets, and there are about seven, how many, seven of us on the committee, so just to let you know. Thank you, Madam Mayor, the consent agenda, approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting, September 9. The Administration and Public Works Committee met this evening, and we ask council's approval of the payroll through September 8, the amount of $2,787,055.50. The bills through the 24th of September, $5,395,610.95. The committee recommends approval of the purchase of 250 trees and planting services for 100 trees from Suburban Tree Consortium in the amount of $57,055. Funding is provided by Parks and Forestry, and this year, the second source of funding, we're proud to announce, is the I Heart Evanston Trees fundraising campaign raised $20,000, which will allow us to plant 100 extra trees. This is for action. We ask your approval also to repair, for repair expenses associated with the required repairs, to front-end loader number 659 in the amount of $33,106.44 from West Side Tractor Sales Company, the authorized single-source service provider for John Deere construction equipment products. We ask your approval also to authorize the city manager to execute a contract for the Evanston VoIP phone system with Heartland Business Systems in the amount of $68,830.96. The committee recommends expending $108,100 for equipment purchases for the four Evanston PEG channels. ECTV requests approximately $71,600, $30,000 for School District 202, and $6,500 for District 65. Funding is provided from PEG fees, $100,000 budgeted in 2012, and $100,000 in 2013. We recommend that the council review and place on file the single audit report for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2012. It is recommended for introduction, Ordinance 97013, authorizing the manager to publicly offer for sale various vehicles and equipment owned by the city through public auction. The vehicles are presently out of service. Ordinance 102013 is for introduction. We ask that you approve decreasing Class B liquor license due to a change in ownership of Flat Top Grill at 707 Church Street. We ask also, with an accompanying ordinance, Ordinance 103013, increase Class B liquor license due to a change in ownership of Flat Top Grill at 707. These are both for introduction. We ask for introduction also, Ordinance 90013, propose revisions to Title III, Chapter IV, Liquor Control Regulations. Also for action is Ordinance 88013. We recommend the adoption of this ordinance, the amendments to this ordinance speak to the city's hotel motel tax code and associated tax collection responsibilities for online travel companies. The Planning and Development Committee met this evening and asks your approval for Resolution 45R13, which authorizes a development and affordable housing agreement between the City Evanston Township High School District 202 and community partners for affordable housing for the future development of a property acquired with Neighborhood Stabilization Program II, NSP II funds at 1941 Jackson Avenue. We ask approval of Ordinance 9903.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Would you please remove that from the agenda?
The 1202 Sherman, yes.
Yes, please, thank you.
Ordinance 98013 is for action, and I'm going to take this off because I have some questions that I don't think were answered in our packet unless I missed them. Human Services. Human Services Committee recommends approval of a substantial amendment to the 2013 Action Plan. The City of Evanston's 2013 ESG grant of $115,781 is approximately 24 percent less than the estimated grant used in the action plan. Therefore, a substantial amendment to the plan is required. Must be approved by the council before subrecipient agreements may be executed. These agreements have to be executed by August, October 14. This is for action and is really urgent. Resolution 38R13 is also off the consent agenda.
Thank you.
And will be addressed by the Chair of Human Services Committee. H3 is approval of the Downtown Performing Arts Center Task Force. Human Services Committee and staff recommend that the City Council request the mayor appoint a nine-member task force to review recent reports conducted on a proposed performing arts center in downtown Evanston. The task force will make recommendations to the council on steps to identify a suitable arts center location, as well as steps associated with construction and operation for such a performing arts center. Ordinance 80013 amends Title III, Chapter 14, cigarettes and tobacco products. This is for introduction, to add restrictions for use of electronic cigarettes and liquid nicotine. Ordinance 105013 is for introduction. It is for a binding referendum for dissolution of Evanston Township. With that, there are no recommendations for appointments by the mayor. I move the consent agenda, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to pass the consent agenda. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Nine zero.
Nine to nothing, the consent agenda passes. Alderman Rainey, I believe Administration and Public Works is taken care of.
I think so.
All right. Congratulations. Alderman Nguyen, Planning and Development.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. P2 is item, is Ordinance 99013 granting major zoning relief to establish an open parking.
How's that? Sorry. P2, Ordinance 99013, granting major zoning relief to establish open parking in the side street, street-side yard of 1202 Sherman Avenue. City staff and the Zoning Board of Appeals affirmed its recommendation to deny the requested zoning relief to allow one open parking space in the street-side yard with a three-foot street-side yard setback where 15 feet is required for parking due to the proximity of the parking space to the neighboring fence. This ordinance was introduced at the September 9 city council meeting. It's for action tonight.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
I move...
Approval?
Approval, thank you. Sorry.
Based on the conversation we had last meeting when this came up, I know that there were a number of reservations.
Excuse me, Alderman Wilson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Go ahead, Alderman Wilson.
I know that there were a number of reservations about the, about the side lot parking, which I understand in some conversations with the applicant and looking at it further. I share some of those reservations, but I do think that there might be an opportunity for them to do an actual garage, which would probably, or possibly work better. I think it's, maybe it's unfortunate that he's been this far down the path for this, and I'm sure they prefer to do this instead of go through the process again for the garage. But it does appear that there is at least maybe one other alternative to this.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, on the corner of Dobson and Dodge, the northeast corner, I fought the establishment of a space for a garage behind the first door of the townhouse at that spot. That, when, when that happened, I would have been very happy to approve a parking pad. When that garage went up, it just made such bulk and such ugliness, even though the garage was beautifully done. It's, it, at first thought, that sounds like a great idea, but believe me, it just adds so much chaos and clutter to a space. So I would urge you not to vote in favor of this denial so that a garage can be built. If you go by there, what it, what in this case it did is it, while it put the garage in this property's side yard, it put it in the front yard of the building next door. It just looks horrible, horrible. Even though it's beautifully maintained and well-constructed, it added way too much bulk and blocked vision and light and everything else. So it's not a good idea.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Alderman Wilson, how much investigation has been done about the possibility of a garage? And I'm just looking at, I'm not looking at the physical space now in the pictures, but just remembering from my head, that space is so small. Where would the garage go?
It is small. I talked to the applicant about it, actually, on Wednesday night, about this, specifically about the garage. So I have the same reservations. It is, it's a difficult corner. There's no two ways about it. Cars coming around the corner, you know, if, in a perfect world, I would, you know, have a lot less parking there, but there's not enough parking as it is. So if people don't feel strongly about it, I can live with the application as it is right now. It's not ideal. It's not what I think is a good idea. I don't think we have any objections from the neighbors. So I can live with it. Alderman Rainey, I think, probably has a good point as far as putting up a garage that might have more mass, not to mention the cost of that. So if my colleagues are amenable, I can go along with this.
Okay. I, I just want to continue. I just remember from the last meeting, which I hadn't thought about before, I think Alderman Fisk made the point of it not just being the curb cut, but we will lose two other additional spots. Is that, am I remembering correctly?
Well, based on the amount of space that you need to do the curb cut, because if you, once you do the curb cut, you need eight feet on either side, so it just takes up that much.
So that is then two, so it's actually three, like almost three things that you're taking up to do the curb cut, right?
But again, it's, it's coming around that corner, so there, there are reasons to want to have fewer cars so you have greater visibility. There are competing interests there.
Okay. I'm just trying to think of what would have the least impact. I mean, I, I don't see any great solutions, but I'm just wondering.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn?
I completely appreciate the difficulty of this spot. My daughter has a very close friend who lives about four doors south, so I'm frequently there picking her up or dropping her off. But I also realize that we have many, many homes in Evanston that have difficult spots that would really like to have a, who would like to have a parking spot in their front yard or side yard that we would not permit otherwise. So I think that this is a bad precedent to set, unfortunately. And I think that, like everyone, many other people in that neighborhood, you have to make do with the street parking that's there. I think some people probably look for private parking. There are a number of garages on the alleys there that someone, you could avail yourself of that possibly, but I can't support a parking spot at that location. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no lights for further discussion. Alderman Braithwaite?
Just a clarification on the vote, Madam Mayor. So we're voting to approve. That was her motion, not the way it reads, correct?
To approve the recommendation to deny.
To deny. Okay. So voting to, thank you.
City staff and the Zoning Board of Appeals affirms its recommendation to deny the requested zoning relief. All right. So it's a vote on Ordinance 99013 granting major zoning relief to establish open parking in the street-side yard at 1202 Sherman Avenue. And it's a recommendation to deny. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn? Alderman Wilson?
Uh, no.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Six to three, six, four, three against.
The motion passes. Next, oh, Alderman Wynn still.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Next is item P3, ordinance, thank you, I've already had one, but I'll take another.
Thought another one might help.
98013 granting special use for resale establishment. The ZBA and city staff recommend the adoption of Ordinance 98013 granting a special use permit for the operation of a resale establishment, Minuchik Boutique, at 1900 Asbury Avenue. This ordinance was introduced on September 9. It's for action tonight. I move approval.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Rainey?
Yes. Madam Mayor, I really apologize for not taking care of this before the meeting, but I just realized that the information in our packet shows, at least what I read, was that as of, I think, this past Wednesday, the 15th or the 18th, I don't even remember what date it was, 18th, that the permits had not yet been pulled for the work that we said should take place. And I'm hoping that it has been completed, and we just didn't get a note on that.
It would be nice for, I mean, that was the issue. Well, but they could give us a note. All right, go ahead.
Good evening. Mark Munzer, Director of Community Development. Alderman Rainey, they got the permit right after the packet went out. We tried to catch it, and we could not.
Email.
But they have, I understand that, and we'll rectify that in the future, but they, they did get the proper permits.
Has the work been started?
Uh, yes.
So we can agree that, I mean, they can't go open for business until they get a certificate of occupancy, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, so that's fine. Okay.
Thank you, Mark.
Yep.
But, but when we hold something up, well, we didn't really hold it up, but we said it was necessary that they get this, and then we get information that says they didn't when they really did, and we should, you can always follow up with a, you know, last-minute email.
I did, I did call, I did call the director to find out, and I'm sure that, I knew it was done, but I hadn't talked to him, but I talked to him today. It's done. Fine.
All right. We're good. City Clerk, would you call the roll on Ordinance 98013 granting special use for resale establishment?
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Burris?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing. The motion passes. Alderman Holmes, you have human services.
Madam Mayor, our resolution, 38R-13, the incremental government agreement with Evanston Township High School, District 202, what was moved to tonight, I think is a date certain to bring information back. However, there was a meeting of the City School Liaison Committee. In the meantime, their information, their next meeting will be on October 10. And at the last meeting, the, I think all of you have in front of you a note about the, just an excerpt from those minutes, where our chief will be pulling the data and everything that was requested at that meeting. And so therefore, I look into some of my colleagues to support the whole idea of moving this back to the Human Services Committee.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to refer this back to the Human Services Committee.
Until all the data and stuff is collected.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
You don't need a vote.
Okay.
Alderman doesn't need a vote to...
You can do it. All right. We're at call, goes back to human services. Congratulations. We're at call of awards. Alderman Braithwaite?
Alderman.
Alderman Wynn?
No.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson? Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem?
No report.
Good heavens. Alderman Grover?
Madam Mayor, a couple things. Evanston Green Living Festival is this Saturday at the Ecology Center. It promises to be quite a great event. October 5, brace yourselves, Ohio State brings their football team and their fans to Evanston for what is already a sold-out game at capacity for 47,000 fans in the stadium, not to mention those who will not be ticketed to get in the stadium. All hotel rooms within Evanston's close orbit are already sold out for this game. It's a 7 o'clock kickoff. We will be, obviously, deploying lots of Evanston and Northwestern police from a Unified Command Center for this, as for every game. And I don't want to stereotype Ohio State fans, but...
Go right ahead.
In deference to Mr. McCray, I will not. Let me just leave it at that. On October 8, Alderman Holmes and I will be at the Ecology Center again to discuss the Ladd Arboretum Master Plan with residents living close by, and that will, will discuss renovations and improvements to the Ladd Arboretum. And I have a reference to make. I got a call a couple weeks ago from Northwestern Athletics asking if there were a way that would be okay for the Chicago Sky Women's Professional Basketball Team to play a possible playoff game here. It would have been actually tonight. The, Chicago Sky did not make it to this round of playoffs. They lost last week. And this would have been a tiebreaker game, third game of a three-game series. And Mr. Farrar, Mr. Bob Quitz, and I tried to figure out a way to make it okay for the Chicago Sky to play at Welsh Ryan Arena, which would have been the host arena, but there was no way to do that, despite the fact that Evanston Township High School is able to host professional women's tackle football at Leisure Field there. So I'd like to make a referral to Zoning Committee of the Plant Commission to consider an amendment to our zoning ordinance to allow some kind of one-off events, these smaller-scale events for professional athletics on university property that would be of a reasonable scale. Chicago Sky, they didn't expect more than 5,000 fans at this event, because it's women's athletics, obviously. I don't know how many fans they get for the women's tackle football games, but there's got to be a way for us to make it okay for the university to host these events if they're not huge, high-impact. I'm not looking for us to host professional, I don't know, football, but a whole series or a whole season, but I think this would be the kind of event that would not have a huge impact on the neighborhood or on Evanston altogether, but would bring some really good fans to Evanston to spend their money here and use otherwise idle athletic facilities. So keep that in mind when you see it pop back up. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Well, once again, the Sixth Annual Bike the Ridge is Sunday, September 29. Starts off with the mayor at Howard Street and Ridge Avenue. Ridge is closed to all automobile traffic. It is the only time in 365 days that you can put a bicycle legally on Ridge Avenue. Not that there aren't them bicycles at other times, but fewer and fewer. So lots of food trucks, the, what do they call the madness at Ridgeville? The, the rock band will play all day, the, the farmer's market will be operating, all sorts of things are going to be going on that day. If you, if you don't have a bike, you can still come and enjoy the party at the Ridgeville Field House. So that's nine to one. The street will be closed from 8 to 2, but nine to one is the bicycle. The, I just want to say, in addition to Sharon Ekrisal, the family of John Castulus finally received closure, more or less, this past week on Thursday. Trial, the hearings and trial, the case has been going on for two years, on the anniversary of the death, a few days, give or take. Jury came back with a felony murder conviction for the accused and ended a two-year-long, every-single-month appearance in Skokie Circuit Court. With the exception of August 2013, a group of neighbors, Chicago and Evanston, attended with the family those hearings. So it was rather emotional and just a wonderful ending to a horrible situation where nobody, nobody really won anything. Very, very sad. So anyway, also, the TIF board met and unanimous decision to support the expansion of the Howard, Howard Hartree TIF, the one at the Jewel and Target. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Burris?
Hi, thank you. I just want to announce that the, on October 5, between 7 and 11:30, is a night out for Ridgeville Park District. It is, will be held at the St. Nicholas Social Hall. Please come out.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson, do you have a motion?
I do. Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding real estate litigation and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are five ILCS 120/2A, C5, C6, C11, and C21.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.[1778.58]